It's 3:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Votes will be conducted by a voice call rather than roll call unless requested by a council member. Does the city manager have any comments?
Mayor and council have a few updates and a few recognitions tonight for you. The first, some update on the census information that was requested at the last meeting. I don't have a, I guess in a sense, any earth-chattering news, I guess, but just to follow up on that question. We have, of course, reviewed the documentation from the 2020 census as provided by the U.S. Census Bureau, which shows a decrease in overall population and an increase in vacant housing. So that's what we're really in, what we would call dispute. Again, we've reviewed specifically the group quarters data. And what that looks at is, again, as you can imagine, housing where it's multiple individuals living in one household or primarily the universities we look at. Was the housing count done correctly or the group quarters done correctly? So the city has until June 30th of 2023 to participate in what is called the 2020 Census Group Quarters Review Operation. Basically, that's a long way to say that that's where we would dispute any numbers that we feel are inaccurate. The U.S. Census Bureau has revised its dates for release of the demographic profile and the demographic and housing characteristics file to May of 2023. So again, we're almost a year out before any kind of really formal review. And really, at that point, we would determine whether or not we really should submit what we would call a dispute. So again, we'll continue to review that information as released. And then the city ultimately has until June 30th, 2023, to submit a census count question resolution. And that would go to the U.S. Census Bureau. So that's a lot of information. Again, not much has changed since really the last time we gave an update. Again, the 2020 census has put the Winona population at 25,405. You know, we suspect that the numbers likely won't change and that that slight decrease in population likely is due to COVID and number of students that were in our community at that time. But again, we're through the community development, particularly Luke Sims is really spearheading this and keeping an eye on it. So. Any questions? Okay. And as I mentioned, we do have a couple of recognitions tonight. And the first is to recognize two individuals from the Winona Police Department who will be retiring this month. They're not here in attendance tonight, but do want to read the following. So we'd like to offer our congratulations to police investigator Tony Gagnon, who will retire on June 27th, 2022. After 24 years of service, Tony began his career as a police officer on September 29th, 1997, and was promoted to investigator on August 6th, 2001. Tony served on the Winona County Emergency Response Team, Southeast Minnesota Violent Crimes Enforcement Team during his career. Tony's integrity and work ethic with the Violent Crimes Enforcement Team helped him advance to the position of section leader for many years. He's been involved in a plethora of multi-jurisdictional efforts where law enforcement has seized hundreds of pounds of illicit drugs and thousands of dollars in cash from the drug trade. The network that Tony has made with authorities from other counties, as well as agencies at the state and federal level, have been instrumental in curtailing the drug problem here in Winona. His work has also had an immeasurable impact on violent crime within our community. Recently, in 2021, Tony led an operation by the Winona Police Department assisting with the apprehension of a suspect wanted for murder in St. Paul. Our second retiree is police officer Paul Anderson, who will retire on June 30th, 2022, after 28 years of service. Paul began employment with the city on January 10th, 1994. Paul served on the Winona County Emergency Response Team as one of the police department's first field training officers. A field training officer trains new police officers on the specific policies and procedures of the department and assess their progress during the probationary period. Paul is best known for his in-depth knowledge of safe and lawful traffic stops and the lesser-known state statutes that can assist officers with investigatory stops. His knowledge and ability to effectively communicate, his actions were instrumental in apprehending and charging many persons with possession of illegal drugs and weapons. In April of 2010, Paul received the Meredith Service Award for his outstanding contributions in the area of public safety from the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association. On behalf of the entire city, city council and staff, please join me in congratulating investigator Tony Gagnon and police officer Paul Anderson on their retirement from service. We wish you both a long, healthy and happy retirement. For the next one, we don't have any certificate, but I'd ask Tyler and Anthony, who are here to stand, please. So recently, two police officers, Tyler Hayden and Anthony Worst, participated in the Road to Hope Bike Ride, a 250-mile charity ride from Chesapeake, Virginia to Washington DC in early May. The Road to Hope is a charity event coordinated by Law Enforcement United with a mission to honor the service and sacrifice of all law enforcement officers who died in the line of duty and to remember the survivors left behind. The ride coincided with the start of National Police Week, where thousands of officers and family members from across the country gathered to celebrate the police profession and honor fallen heroes. Team Minnesota raised over $60,000, with a contribution of $10,000 from officers Hayden and Worst. Officer Anthony Worst received the top individual fundraiser award. Charity funds will be used to support the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum, recognize exemplary law enforcement service, fund resources for officer suicide prevention, and provide educational opportunities to the public. Officers Hayden and Worst are already making plans to participate in the 2023 Road to Hope event. We thank you both for your dedication and commitment to the police profession and are grateful for your representation of the Winona Police Department at this national event. In mayor council, last recognition we'd like to complete tonight. The Park Recreation Department has been recognized by the American Red Cross for completing over 200 certifications in the 2021 calendar year. Training certifications include CPR, water safety instruction and lifeguard skills for part-time and full-time staff. Certification programs ensure the safety of our patrons, users, and visitors year-round and have a long-lasting impact on our community and most certainly with individuals receiving the training. While this is a great achievement for the city of Winona Park Rec. Department, I would like to specifically recognize Recreation Coordinator Ally Mayer for her instrumental work. Before I continue, Ally, if you could stand, please, I know the council knows you, but if you could stand, thank you. Ally oversees this successful operation of Aquatic Center each year. She continuously works on developing her skills in order to provide quality, rigorous training to full-time and part-time recreation staff. She alone organized training and certified all of the individuals who received Red Cross certifications in 2021. Ally has done important work in other areas of recreation also. And while we have her here tonight, I'd like to quickly add two additional items of recognition for her work during the 2020 pandemic year. First, Ally was instrumental in transforming the Recreation Center into a community vaccination clinic and then worked at nearly all of those clinics. Second, she helped create over 700 to-go kits for families and youth due to the Recreation Center being closed. Finally, I'd like to recognize Ally for completing her personal goal of obtaining a master's degree in Recreation Management at UWL in May of this year and becoming a certified park and recreation professional by the National Recreation and Park Association. Ally, on behalf of council staff, the community, again, we congratulate you and the Park Rec. Department on its recognition from the American Red Cross. And again, Ally, for all of your hard work and commitment to the city of Winona. Thank you.
I'll now ask the C. Clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman. Councilmember Young.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Wozikowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests and communications, item 3.1 is the liquor license renewals for 2022. We still are waiting for insurance for four of those licenses.
Motion to approve the licenses with the licenses for the those listed applicants contingent upon receipt of a certificate of liquor liability no later than Thursday, June 23rd.
I'll second that. Every one seconds.
Motion, Eileen. I'm going to give it to Pam because she's closest to me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Passes.
Item 3.2 is the temporary wine and malt liquor licenses for the Minnesota Marine Art Museum for Tuesdays in July.
Move to approve those licenses.
Second.
I give Eileen the first second to Pam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Item 3.3 is Poots Tavern Street closure request for July 9th.
Move to approve the request.
Second.
First to Eileen, second to George. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to add on this with the Poots closure, they're looking at just to close Caramona Street from 7th to the alley, not all the way to A Street. And then they request that barricades be dropped off as well.
Correct.
So. Thank you.
Anything else? No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Passes.
Item 3.4 is the Winona State University Homecoming Parade Request for October 22nd.
Move to approve the request.
Second.
First, Eileen, second to Pam. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Item 3.5 is a request to close Lake Park Drive by Wincraft for July 30th.
Move to approve the request.
Second that.
Eileen and Pam, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Item 3.6 is the updated parking near Madison Elementary School.
Move to introduce the ordinance.
Second that.
The first, Eileen, second to Pam. Any discussion?
So just to clarify, this is to remove the parking areas that were in place because of the school, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Item 3.7 is the updated parking near Central Elementary School.
Move to introduce the ordinance.
Second that.
First, Eileen, second to Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Item 3.8 is a request for 15-minute parking on Mankato Avenue.
Move to introduce the ordinance.
I'll second that.
First, Eileen, second to Aaron. Any discussion?
Ms. Alexander, I think it's a great idea for them. They do need it. I've been there a number of times and talked to them, and I appreciate us supporting it.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Excuse me. Item 3.9 is the Great River Shakespeare Fest Request for Use to the East Rec. Center.
Move to execute the agreement.
Second that.
First, Eileen, second to Pam. Any discussion or questions for Aaron Young, who is here? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Item 3.10 is the American Queen Voyages Docking Request.
Move to allow the American Queen Voyages Docking and to close Cal-Fremling Parkway during the dockings.
Second.
First to Eileen, second to George. Any discussion?
Mayor and council, just one note. On Wednesday, September 28th, American Queen plans to dock, obviously, in Lovey Park. It's also a date when the American Cruise Line is docking as well. So we'll have two boats. We'll coordinate those dockings, but there will be two boats on that day. So it'll be a busy day in Lovey Park.
Cool. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the Transit Grant Application for 2023.
Move to adopt the attached resolution.
Second that.
First to Eileen, second to Pam. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
Item 5.2 is the Certification of Completion, Final Estimate and Resolution of Acceptance for the Westlake Boulevard Bridge Project.
Move to introduce the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion, Eileen, second to Steve. Any discussion?
I have one, your mayor. What do they do with the old bridge? Is there a set thing for that? Reason I ask is I had a snowmobile club contact me and with the thought of them being able to hopefully help remove it and keep it or, you know, a small fee, and then they could retrofit it for a snowmobile bridge.
I'd have to check with the contractor, I guess, to see where they hauled that bridge to. I don't know offhand where they brought that.
Okay, it was just recently asked of me and I said, I can ask the question.
Yep, I can check and try and get you an answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
If I could, Ryan, if I could just quick ask you a question, just so I'm tracking the money here. This came through, this was a grant through the state of Minnesota?
I believe it was a federal grant for, I think, 80% of the cost.
Okay, that's, I knew it was grant money and you said it was 80%?
I think it was 80. I'd have to double-check, but it was primarily federal grant dollars.
Just interested in how the money flows.
Yep.
Follow the money. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes.
And item 5.3 is the BanShell Renovation Funding Request.
I make a motion to allocate a not-to-exceed amount of $300,000 from the facility fund to be used for the BanShell renovation project and to allow a committee to fundraise on behalf of the BanShell renovation project.
I would second that.
Motion, Eileen, second to Pam. Chad has some clarification?
Mayor and council, thank you for that. One clarification that I do want to make and may need to do an amendment to the motion. The city certainly will take ownership in this project. When we have a fundraising committee come forward, we usually give what we consider like the okay to go ahead and fundraise on behalf of the city. It's not something that the city should do or go out and fundraise. And so the allow a committee to fundraise on our behalf is probably, should be stricken from the motion. But that, of course, the city supports the project. And the example is like when the Lions Club came for the playground, we didn't do an official action item. We just said, "Thank you for your willingness to go out and fundraise on behalf of the city." Or Sobieski Park Lodge, where we said to the East End Neighborhood Watch Group, you know, again, "Thank you for supporting the project and appreciate your willingness to fundraise on behalf of the city." And again, former mayor Mark Peterson has agreed to lead a group. I think just simply giving the okay is appropriate for the motions so that we don't get into conflict with the city is actually technically going out and fundraising, which we cannot do.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I think we saw this at one point from a presentation, but what is the ballpark figure for that entire project?
Mayor and council, that's a good question. And I know the mayor is really, former mayor Mark Peterson is really interested in us getting that number. We're working on it. We've done the structural analysis of the current facility. Came back today that we need to do a little bit more exploratory to get a solid number on what we'd call the structure. We've also been working with ISG on the landscaping area of the BanShell that we feel needs to be improved, primarily the seating. So we don't, at this time, have a total project cost. Obviously, it's, we anticipated exceeding well over $300,000. Certainly, that $300,000 request is our commitment. We'd hope to raise certainly more than that.
And this was something we had discussed earlier because we're coming up on an anniversary for the BanShell, right?
So the BanShell will celebrate its 100th anniversary in June of 2024. And so we're planning now because we know that any structural work or any landscaping work that needs to be done, we need the time to do it. That's also why this request is coming before you tonight is so that those that are volunteering to fundraise for us have time to secure funds before construction begins in earnest.
Great, thank you.
Chad, I believe the structure actually needs work too. Apart from the 100-year anniversary, we actually need to do this. And it's timely that it falls under the anniversary, but it maybe helps with some fundraising, but it actually needs some work, correct?
So mayor and council, that's correct. This is, you know, I guess I would not hesitate to say that this is an iconic piece of Winona. It's not just simply, it's the 100th anniversary. That's really important and we should celebrate it, in my opinion. It is that it does need structural work. It's been now, well, 10-plus years on the roof. It's been close to 20-plus years on other, what I would call, structural pieces to that facility. And so this work, you know, I guess despite the 100th anniversary coming up, there's work that needs to be done in this facility.
So Chad, are you hoping that we can get a motion or a friendly motion from Eileen to remove that last sentence, allow a committee to fundraise on behalf?
Okay, I will amend my motion to just say we allocate a not-to-exceed amount of $300,000. Yes, $300,000 from the facility fund to use on the BanShell renovation project.
I would second that amendment.
And former mayor Peterson, do you want to talk to this item at all, since you're here?
Good evening. Given an opportunity to speak, I'd be happy to. I'll keep it brief because I know it's warm. I really do hope the council will pass this motion because I think it's an important asset to the city. We have a lot of assets in this community, but I think Lake Park and the BanShell would be in most people's top five. And as you said, the BanShell needs work. We don't know how much or exactly what has to be done, and that's a number that we need to get to quickly. And the aesthetics part of this, we need to get to that number too quickly because we want to raise the money and have it either pledged or in hand in time for letting the bids out. I forget, next summer or spring, early, late spring, early summer, so that work can start in the fall of '23 and the spring of '24 and be completed by June 14th, 2024, which will be a rededication of the Bell BanShell. We, Lake Park has been developed by a combination of city funds and a whole lot of community groups, from the Rotary Club to the Rose Society, to the Veterans Groups, to, you know, I'm leaving out a lot of people here, I know I am, but this is another example, I think, of the community helping the city with a project that will enhance our community for the long term. And so when I sat in that chair a long, a couple of years ago, I started talking to staff about my interest in getting involved in this project at some point. And even though I'm now happily retired and finding myself pretty busy, I'm more than happy to get behind this project. And I do have a number of community members already that are committed. We've talked to the Vets Group and Jerry Craig, said former councilman Craig will represent that group. I talked to councilwoman Hayden a long time ago about serving on the committee, and she said yes. And I don't remember anybody in my eight years on the council that talked more about the BanShell and the municipal band than Al thoroughly. And he's interested in helping out, as well as Frank and Ruth Burris, who are going to represent the municipal band. The Rotary Club is already committed. They voted to take on the benches as part of their commitment to this project. The Laird Norton family have already committed some monies towards this. We think there's an opportunity coming up here at their family meeting this month and beyond to tap into some more of that, as well as some of the businesses and generous community people that we have. So in the end, I think we're going to have a really wonderful, enhanced area over there around the BanShell. And I, again, hope you support it. And I'll answer questions if you have any, have any, otherwise I'll quickly sit down.
Does anyone have questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you for agreeing to do it. All right, so we need to vote on both. So first, we'll vote on the amendment to the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Passes. And then let's vote on the motion to support the action item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Passes.
And item 7.1 is council concerns.
Okay, let's start with George.
Thank you, your honor. Before, oh, he left already. I was going to say, before I mentioned the Hamilton Street Railroad crossing, I wanted to just say publicly hello to former mayor Mark Peterson, so, for the record. So anyway, on Mark Street from Hamilton Street down to probably Zumbro Street, it's railroad property. The grass has not been mowed since the beginning of this season. There is now people putting bonfires over there. Did I say bomb? I meant to say ban, bonfires over there. I understand, or even burning furniture. So if we can just look, get a hold of the railroad. When they are contacted, they do cut it. And usually, we have to, you know, press them to do that, is probably as much as all their other property as well, too. But Mark Street from Hamilton to Caramona or Zumbro, somewhere in there, so, thank you on that. Also, thank you to Steamboat Days Committee for a very, very fine and well-enjoyed Steamboat Days this year. To everyone who volunteered their time, and there are numerous ones. And also, I would just like to take a moment to congratulate Miller Ingenuity, who this Thursday will be celebrating 75 years in the city of Winona. And they've come from a small company to a leader in their industry, as we talked today. So congratulations to Steve Blue and all of his folks there that help along with that. In the roundabouts, be patient. It's getting closer. The center mound now out on 61 is beginning to take shape. So just have some patience. It's coming along. So, thank you.
And Pam?
About that roundabout, nobody told me that I'd be going around to the left. I want to know how they're going to give us all lessons to swing to the right again after it's all done. It's a very good question.
Eileen. Echoing, excuse me, congratulations about Steamboat Days. It was lovely. I believe I was informed that next year the City Hall will be observing our new federal holiday of Juneteenth, which the day of observation is today. So a lot of federal buildings are closed and banks and things. And next year will be included on that. Is that correct?
So mayor and council, as many of you know, President Biden officially put it into federal law, and then each state has to recognize the holiday as well. So we anticipate that next year it will become a state holiday and that will be recognized.
Great. And then on that note, thank you to all the community members who showed up for our our second annual Community Juneteenth Celebration yesterday, and congratulations to all the groups that put it on, especially our voices. It was a phenomenal event. I got a hot dog. It was great. So congratulations to Keisha and everyone in our voices and everyone who, excuse me, who organized that. It was really lovely.
And Steve?
Don't count us in.
Aaron?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from June sixth.
Second. George first, Eileen second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Passes.
Being seven P.M. Central Standard Time, a motion that we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes.